Brendan, how are you?
Mom, how are you?
Doing good, it's good to see you. Alright guys, it's 1:30, we'll go ahead and get started with our regular meeting of the Randolph County Commission. If you would stand for prayer and pledge. Brooke, water please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings to us. God, I especially want to thank you for helping me through this recent illness. And Lord, as I continue to recover, I pray that you'll just continue to be with me. Lord, also be with our first responders and thank you for everyone who's come to show interest today. We pray that we will all have a, we'll walk out of here with a unity of mind once we're done. God, thank you for your goodness, thank you for your blessings, and we ask that you bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For you who are standing in the back, we do have one seat up front if you'd like to come, if anybody would like to. Do I need to volunteer someone? You want to come up front? Phil, okay, alright. Everybody's embarrassed, they don't want to come up front.
It's not wired, we promise.
Have you all noticed I was a little short of breath through my prayer? Recently, I was sick for four weeks. It started as a kidney infection, I had no idea what it was. As I got sicker and my fever got higher, I finally went to the hospital when I thought I was having a heart attack. What it turned out to be was a collapsed lung. Went and was tested, my, the intermediate or the short-term test for COVID came back negative. The long-term test came back positive. And I'm telling you, this is the sickest I've ever been. They're pretty sure it's the COVID variant because the type of pneumonia, I had double pneumonia. Type of pneumonia I had was, was different than COVID pneumonia. So, they're pretty sure it's the Delta variant. I've been put on medication, I've been cleared off quarantine for the last week. I have the antibodies, thankfully. I had had COVID before, this is a horse of a different color. This thing will kill you, I promise you. I was, it was very, very, very bad. So, the doctor allowed me to come today, but I gotta tell you guys, the medication I'm on, ten minutes of conversation seems like an hour and a half. I feel like a squirrel on speed. So, if during the comment period, I have to leave, please understand, I, I, please don't take it as disrespect. But my head begins to hurt really bad after a little while. So, you know, I appreciate your patience with me, and please, if I leave the room, don't misconstrue that, okay? Alright, thank you guys. Alright, public comment. We have several sign up for public comments here?
We do, sir.
Alright, go ahead and announce the first name.
Rachel Anger.
Okay, Rachel, for public comment, there's a five-minute time period. We're gonna put you on because there's so many people to comment today. We're gonna put everybody on a timer. When the timer goes off, I'll, I will hit the gavel just once, okay?
Sure.
And you'll know that your time is up because we want to get as many people as want to speak today, give them the opportunity to speak.
And we have several that have emailed in that the sheriff's want to read to, so that everybody's prepared.
I've got new contacts.
And by the way, folks, I've received several emails, and I really have just, it's been hard for me to go through emails. So, if anyone has been missed from the comment period, from the sheriff, please understand, if you send it to me only, we may have not had, had been able to print it out. So, Rachel, go ahead.
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, my name is Rachel Anger. I'm an elected member of the Randolph County Board of Education. I'm also a member of the Randolph County Park and Rec Board, often referred to as the Rec Board. Although I am a member of both of these boards, I'm not speaking on their behalf. Neither board can meet before this county commission meeting. I was saddened and surprised to hear that Mr. Kiesling and Mr. Scott requested the resignation of the president of the Parks and Recreation Board, Dr. Frank Mams. Dr. Mams has been a lifelong 4H and Camp Pioneer supporter. Dr. Mams turned in his resignation to the Randolph County Commission on July 28th. To provide some history into this position, I discovered that Dr. Mams was first appointed to the Rec Board on March 6th, 2018 by the Randolph County Board of Education. I actually made the motion to approve this position. Persuaded to Article 3, Section 1 of the organizational bylaws, any person nominated must be appointed by the Randolph County Board of Education. Supplemental material to his appointment was a letter by Dr. Tracy Walker recommending him to this position. Now I see on your agenda item K, consideration for appointment to the Rec Board. I have no way of knowing if this is purely for discussion or to appoint a replacement.
Yeah, Rachel, can I interrupt you a second? We thought from our conversation with Mr. Mams that he was appointed by this commission. So, we will table that appointment and allow you as a board to appoint his replacement.
Okay, great, so, just to finish up, my, my request was to have this item tabled so that it is done properly and between the Rec Board and Randolph County Board of Education. It is also my sincere hope that the relationship between the county commission and Dr. Mams can be restored. I believe that is in the best interest of the Rec Board and Camp Pioneer. I'd also be remiss, because I'm here representing two groups too, I applaud you guys for looking into something that our kids and families need so much, and that's a pool. I think we're so darned close, but I think that, you know, if we would do it, to do it right, that would include times for lap swimming and other availability to help increase bottom line and keep the pool afloat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Larry Serratt. I don't think you people all know me, Mark knows me. My name is Larry Serratt, I'm a Mary Milkrey.
Good to see you, buddy.
I'm down here at the VAS, see what you all think, what you can do. We're just about tapped out on our money to finish our water project. I would just like to let you all know, if there's any way you can help us any at all, we would appreciate it. That's not all I'm down here to say.
Okay, I got a call from Shane White here.
Right, you did.
The other day, and he told me that what your dilemma was.
Right.
And I told him that it would definitely be one of our priorities. Of course, it's an infrastructure project.
Right.
So, it'll be one of our priorities for the ARC funding. So, we are excited to be able to partner with you. Larry, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we can do the whole amount, okay?
Yeah.
But we'll come in and partner with you and help you all we can.
Sound good.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Long Mid-City Hall.
Yeah, yeah, it's 1.5 million is what you needed, right?
Yeah, but we're working on some different angles to try to get to. We're just about, whenever we can.
If you let us know what you need, once you get the total from the engineers. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Estrid Daniels.
It's Garber Daniels.
Can you say your first name again for Brenda?
Estrid Garber Daniels.
Can you spell it for us, please, if you don't mind?
E.S.T.R.I.D.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Estrid Garber Daniels. What I wanted to say is that if we give a, if we get a pool that has multiple lanes and is extended, other children will be able to come in and use the pool and get involved in otters. If this does not happen, there will be less physical educate, uh, physical, um, whatever. Um, they would be helped in that way, and, um, that's all I would like to say.
Thank you. Estrid, thank you. When you're sitting in our seats one day, we'll, we'll be watching out for you, so, thank you.
Judy Ritchie.
Do you want to trust them with that?
Well, I was a little scared, but I can trust the person with the sheriff. I could get the heart of me, my purse.
Here, I'll, I'll let me get through it.
Okay, I'm Judy Ritchie, and first, there are two of the toughest election positions, are our county commissioners and our board of education. You guys are the people who are face-to-face every day with the supporters and the critics out in the public. So, first, I'd like to thank you for the job that you do. I'm here to speak briefly about this one pool and splash project. I have no children, so, I'm here alone, but I was asked by several parents, babysitters, groups of people who have a concern, if I would come and speak for the kids that aren't able to be here and come. So, I work daily with budgets, not just my business operation budgets, but my customers' buying budgets. Many times, what they want to buy and what their personal or bank budgets are, are far apart. In cases like these, the tough decisions must be made. Do they remove high-end options? Do they downsize the house? Or do they wait until they save more money or down payment, or until they get a raise to afford more home? It's a similar situation that we face today. For years, the Randolph County citizens have been screaming for a splash pad and pool. At one time, a group worked on it, and the project fell apart when people started wanting bigger and better. Now, we all want bigger and better, but the budget and plans are not there for it. I don't want to see this project put on hold or fall apart again. The project proposed fits the needs and desires of the majority of Randolph County. It fits the money that you gentlemen have worked for to finally find and provide a pool to the children who don't have one in their own backyard. Your responsibility is to the majority, not the few. Because of all of this, I ask you to finalize and continue the splash pad and pool projection as designed and presented.
Thank you, Judy.
Dickie Gold.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Gold, I'm president of the Valleyhead Community Center, and we are looking for somebody to move the playground equipment from the Valleyhead school.
Excuse me, you're on the agenda on later.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah, you're number single in the gym. Yeah, we're, we're gonna consider you here in a few minutes.
Okay.
Alright, didn't mean to interrupt you, but we're gonna hit you.
I didn't know it was my turn or not.
That's good, go, you're fine with school, thank you.
We'll call you up in a minute.
You're special, you're on there twice. Eric Garber Daniels.
Um, I actually would like to speak.
You want us to come back to you?
It wants to speak. I have a question, am I allowed to speak again for him, or no?
Sure, yes.
You didn't use up your time the first time.
Um, so, I'm sorry about the last time, and that, I wanted to say that other people that are not grownups might actually want the pool. Kids will actually be swimming in it that are not grownups. Kids will need to use this pool, and DNE can refuse us entry at any time they want to. Swim was put off for a little bit, and we didn't have a big enough space in DNE. We could not have any home meets, which didn't bring in too much money at all. If you invest in this pool, you'll be able to get money from other people coming here. Whenever they buy food or maybe shirts or something, they'll get lot, you'll bring in a lot of money from it, and it will be enough to pay off the debt and money investments that you put into the pool. And that is all of it.
Alright, thank you, Estrid. Awesome, awesome, thank you for coming back up.
Jared Varner.
I gotta follow that up. Come back right there. Well, at one point, I used to be as small as Estrid, part of Elkins Otters. My name is Jared Varner, grew up here in Elkins, 92 to 2012, left because of work, tried like heck to get back. Swimming's been a big part of my life, swam in college. When I was gone living in Beckley, there was a void, those four years where I wasn't involved in swimming. I was able to come back to Elkins and the county, buy a house, get married, I was able to help with Rades. Otters, Johnny Schmidt, started Otters in 2000, he's going to speak later, with a lady named Kate Dattney. I think you said you knew who she was?
Yeah.
Started in 2000, I've seen it grow. I think the third year, we had, we got second, fourth year, we won. We've been champions eight times, four times in a row. Basically, you know, I'm not here to stop the construction that you guys have put in place, but I think it's, it's just missing the mark on uniting everyone. You said hopefully we can have some unity. I also heard, you know, it's for most, not the few. How are you gonna have unity if it's only for the most and not everyone? There's three main things I think that could benefit if we, you know, take a step back, look, look at the area, rework, you know, get new designs, I know that takes time for bidding process and everything, but it'd be beneficial for the kids because they have another opportunity to swim, like Estrid said, DNE can close us off at any time, and because of COVID, they were closed off until this year. We couldn't have any meets there, they were lucky they got to swim there. The YMCA was there, but like this pool project, it's, it's short of market competition pool. So, it's for those kids. This will be the third generation of kids I've seen grow up in Elkins, not have an outdoor pool like the rest of the leagues. When I was young like these kids, I wondered why, now I know. So, for the kids, number one, number two, it could bring in money. People come here, minimum 20 families, if you're holding dual meets, you know, Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine weeks throughout the summer, you'd have maybe five or six dual meets. 20 times 20 is 400 bucks in meals. I'm sure they're gonna get gas before they drive back to Bridgeport. If you have teams coming from Grafton or Phillippe, they might stop at Walmart. It could build into something where we could even maybe host the championship meet, 400 swimmers, hotels, all weekend. That's the only time it would take away from recreational use is on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. The schedule for Otters, if they use the pool that was big enough, would be in the mornings before any recreation pool opens. I grew up working at the Elks, I learned to swim at the Elks. It typically doesn't open until noon, and it's usually open until seven on meet nights. You know, I heard a lot of, I heard a lot of discussion that it would take away from recreation, but it really doesn't. People from the outside would come in, they'd go to that pool, stay there, and then stay for the meet. So, you're only losing a couple hours a week to have them hold a meet there. Yes, and then health, so health's important to everyone right now. So, you know, outside of recreation, competition health, you're gonna have training. That's, that's good for all the kids in the community, not just a few or the, or most. The Otters is a, a good program, anybody can win it, like Vicki said, nobody's been turned away. So, the health of every kid could be, you know, available. If we had more than one pool, if it grew to 200 swimmers instead of 100, we could have, you know, practices at more than one place if we needed to. Sometimes I think it's better to, it's more costly to do renovations than building something new, and I think that needs to be looked into a little bit more, and that's, that's my only reason in doing this is to exhaust all efforts of, you know, seeing what we can do. Let me see, checking my notes, sorry. One example I thought of, it's like turning a field, you got a big field, and you want to renovate it, and it's 90 yards for football, and you got, you know, Paul Warner wants to play on it. Well, that's great, they can practice, they can't have, you know, games there. You know, they're gonna have to travel for every game. So, I just think it's really nearsighted, and I think it needs to be looked in more too. See what it would take to tear everything up and put in a new pool that's competition-sized and recreational, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah, thank you.
Jared, I, I said it privately, I want to say it publicly, I appreciate your enthusiasm, your passion, I really do. You and I have had some period conversations. Sure know, it was last week or so, but I want you to know, I really mean, I appreciate that.
I do, I do have one more thing, I printed maps, I don't need to show them to anyone. It's six other pools that we compete at, and I outlined the acreage of the pool area and the parking lot areas in comparison with what the Elks would be.
Could you provide us a copy of that?
I can give you these copies right here.
Alright, fantastic.
Elks Pool, then Shinston, that's where we held the championship meet, Grafton Pool, Buckhanded, Phillippe, Clarksburg, and they're all, they're all within the same similar acreages that we have out there available.
Alright.
So, just for reference.
Hey, thanks again.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Jared Nestor.
Good afternoon, my name is Jared Nestor, and I'm not a resident of Randolph County. I am an elected official from Barber County, so I understand where you guys are sitting and what you have to do. Decisions are tough, I understand that. You have money to deal with, you've got people's lives you're dealing with, and I understand and I appreciate that because I have to deal with that myself. But I'm here as a parent today. My son, as you can see, swims for the Otters, okay? If it wasn't, the reason we're coming to Randolph County is not only just because of the pool that is available through DNE, but you have some top-notch coaches that you cannot get anywhere else in this area. And I think it would be a crying shame to the youth in this community not to that be utilized because of a COVID outbreak that closes a pool they cannot use. I also understand the fact of, like the lady said earlier, of needing a place for the children to play. I understand that. But if, from my understanding, and I don't know that we have real numbers yet provided to us, that's been consistent of what it would take to extend your guys' current plans that you have. Because I think everyone in this room would still like the splash pad, would still like those areas that you guys have agreed or have looked at and possibly agreeing to. All we're asking is to extend it a little more. My son, before coming here, could barely do one stroke. Since he's come here, he can do all strokes and do them very well. And that's not a brag on my son, because people know I do not brag on my kids. I'm bragging on the, on the program that is here, and how much more this pool could help more kids possibly get an education, just like Mr. Varner said, that's what he did in school, that's how he got his school paid for, which made a job which now brings more money in the community. As well as, if you have, like people's already stated, how much money is brought in with the added people coming in, you have, you know, your tax dollars plus just revenue to businesses, and I know some of you are, you know, business owners, so you should appreciate that as well. Thank you for your time, and you can call me if you need to talk to me.
Jared, thank you very much, if you don't mind, can you provide your number, you want to come up and write it?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd love to get to talk to you.
Sure.
Hey, and you, thank you for those kind of words from someone from outside the county about the Otters program. This commission recognizes what a valuable program it is. We also recognize the fact, you guys are winning with the Otters pool, so, we understand that. We, you know, you're able to do it with the Y and with the, with the DNE pool, so, we, we appreciate that. And I will tell you that during our discussions, we've taken that into consideration, so, next.
Tracy Walker.
Hello, can you guys hear me alright?
Yes.
My name is Dr. Tracy Walker, I'm a current member and past president of the Randolph County Park and Recreation Board. I'm speaking on my own behalf today. It has come to my surprise that our, our current president, Dr. Frank Mams, has been asked to resign by the commissioners Scott and Kiesling effective July 22nd. As president at the time of Frank's nomination to the board, I am compelled to seek clarification from the commissioners on our board appointment procedures. The position that Dr. Mams has to fill is defined as a Randolph County taxpayer. According to our bylaws, Article 3, Section 1, this position shall be appointed by the Randolph County Board of Education, which you've already acknowledged now. I see that consideration for, of appointment for the Rec Board is item K on today's agenda. You have stated that we will probably table that. Our last board meeting was on Monday, July 19th, and as such, our volunteer board has not had time to meet appropriately to respond to either the call for resignation or nomination and appointment of a new board member. I would ask the commissioners again to table this agenda item to allow for further clarification of the Rec Board appointment procedures. Lastly, Dr. Mams has been a longtime supporter of the 4H program as a leader, camp instructor, volunteer, and donor. He has been an upstanding member of the community and valued board member of both the Randolph County 4H Foundation Board and the Randolph County Park and Recreation Board. It is my opinion that his loss will have immense impact on the Rec Board. As we are all acting in the best interest of Camp Pioneer, it is my hope that Dr. Mams may remain in his position and reestablish his relationship with the commission.
Thank you, Dr. Frank, I appreciate it. Next.
Vicki Judy.
Hello, my name is Vicki Fenwick Judy.
Hey Vicki, if you want to, you lift that microphone up a little bit. Good night.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Vicki Fenwick Judy, and I moved from Tucker County to Bowden at the end of 2019. Previously, we lived in Harmon, and it was during that time that my oldest daughter began swimming for the Elkins Otters, excuse me, when she was seven. She has swam for them for every year for the last 10 years and developed such a love for the sport that a driving factor in our return to Randolph County was her determination, and actually her begging, to swim at the high school level. Thank you, Hannah. So, I guess you could say that our family is pretty passionate about swimming and the opportunities it provides for young people. I'm here today to accomplish three things. I want to make sure that you, our elected representatives, and the community at large are completely clear on what Elkins Otter is and what it isn't. I also want to share my support for the construction of a swimming facility, including the splash pad for this community. And lastly, I want to voice my concern for the lack of cooperation and collaboration that has transpired throughout this process. Over the past week, there's been a Randolph County Commission Pool and Splash Pad page on Facebook, and it became a repository of divisiveness and ugliness. There were many references to a private swim team, and I just want to make sure without a, beyond a shadow of a doubt that everyone understands we are not a private swim team. I don't even really understand where that reference started from. The Elkins Otters is a summer recreational swim program and is part of the North Central West Virginia Swimming League. We are a nonprofit organization incorporated in the state of West Virginia, just the same as Seneca Soccer or Little League. In my five or six years volunteering on the board, we've never refused participation to anyone. We fundraise, we get sponsorships from local businesses, and we offer scholarships if the registration fee is a financial barrier to anyone. There are no trouts, there are no cuts, everyone swims. We have kids from all over Randolph County, including as far away as Harmon and Huttonsville, and we currently have kids from Tucker, Upsher, and Barber County as well. You've heard from Jared, who's over in Barber County, we have another representative here from Tucker County. These kids are actually choosing to drive to our swim team instead of their home swim team because of the quality of coaching as well as the sportsmanship of our program, Mr. Nestor referred to that. I have volunteered for many years for the Elkins Otters, and I'm proud of this program. I'm sad to see some people in our community refer to it in derogatory terms based on misinformation. To be honest, I'm exhausted with the us and them mentality in our world right now. It's everywhere we turn, over every topic imaginable, but I was astounded and saddened that that dialogue on Facebook became so ugly and divisive. For further clarity, there is an additional swim team that is associated with the YMCA called the Rades. It's structured a little differently and not the target audience or potential partner that the Elkins Otters are. There are some families that participate in both swim teams, but the Elkins Otters is much larger and would have the bigger benefit from a 25-meter outdoor pool. All but two of the other swim teams in our league, about 15 or so teams, have 25-meter outdoor pools. It's slightly larger than the current pool we use at DNE. The Otters can continue, as some have suggested, to practice at Davis and Elkins, and we are thankful for the partnership we have with them and the YMCA. Secondly, I can only speak for myself, not on behalf of the Otters, but I think this pool and splash pad project is going to be a huge asset for Elkins and the surrounding area. I feel like the swim team people have gotten the rap that we don't want this amenity and that we aren't appreciative. But I want to state for the record that personally, I think the pool and splash pad are exactly what this area needs. As some others have pointed out, many communities around us all have similar facilities, and it's a great amenity for our families and our youth. Recently, I read an article online, and an official in Bridgeport said that their pool is their most-used recreational facility that they have. So, I'm excited to see movement towards the solutions. My last point, and you may be able to guess where I'm headed with this, is the lack of collaboration and cooperation that, that, by the commission, has created a project that is less than what it could be. Beginning in January of 2020, we had representatives, family members, and I believe we submitted a letter on behalf of the Otters, wanting to be a part of the designing and fundraising process early on so the swim team could have a public recreational facility that we could use. There is some type of misconception that a swim team There is some type of misconception that a swim team would limit the usability of the pool for families and non-swim team youth, but that's far from the truth. Building a competitive-sized pool increases the revenue potential, and personally, I think it creates a more sustainable plan for maintenance and operations. I can promise you without a doubt in my mind, if 25 years down the road there is a financial need for the pool, the first people to step up to the plate will be the swim team and their families. Need lifeguards? Need concession stand workers? It's going to be these teenagers that are here, that are on the swim team. Swim teams don't detract from the operations of a municipal, a municipal pool. They add value, they add stability, and they even add revenue. I appreciate the time to express my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Smith.
Hey, John, before we get started, hey, thank you for the vision to get this program started in Randolph County years ago. I've learned about it in the last, you know, maybe 10 years. How long ago did you start the program?
Kate Abney and I started it in 2000.
Yes, as was mentioned by Jared, I knew Kate.
Yep.
Better, I don't know if we've ever met before, but...
We met cleaning out rivers.
Alright, there you go.
You can haul a tire out just as well as anybody.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate that. You don't see that by officials very often. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. It's good to see you, and it's good to be here. You know, I too support some aquatic facility for this county. I moved here in 87, and that was one of the things that was sorely missed, you know, from all the places I lived all over the country. And we have a lot of folks who had to leave here, and one of the things they find when they go out, out of state, is like, you know, they got a rec, we got recreational pools where we live. Like, yeah, I know, I know. We'll get one, and I'm glad we're getting there, okay? And I have 40-plus years of coaching experience, 20-some with the Otters, and then I started helping coach the Rays, alright? So, I mean, I, I've been doing this a while, and I've had the pleasure of coaching a lot of children. We've had almost 1,000 kids come through the Otters program in the last 20 years. You know, because, I mean, and it's, and we have them from all, I mean, we've had a bunch of kids from up the valley, Tucker, you know, Randolph, Barber, and I don't think we've had any from Pocahontas yet, but we're getting there. The, you know, as, as Vicky mentioned, I offered to help, you know, when Dave was at that REC board meeting, I offered to help, we offered to help. You know, I've run pools, I've managed swim teams, I've raised a lot of money so that we, our kids on the Otters could swim for cheap. You know, I, I grew up in Northern Virginia, and I was on an AAU team back then that was very expensive, but my mom and dad, you know, scrimped and saved so I could do it. And one thing I noticed when I moved here, you know, having coached in Little League, is our kids aren't going to be able to afford that kind of team. So, we set out to make the Otters as affordable as we could. We gave scholarships to kids, some, some knew it, some didn't. We bought swimsuits for kids, we bought goggles. I mean, there was no kid in, well, the time that I was coaching the Otters that was ever wanting, if they wanted to swim, I wanted them in the pool, alright? So, we, and, and it's, the tradition still continues. So, I want, you, I just want to set that, you know, out in the record for everybody. You know, the Otters have spawned a very successful Elkins High School team. A number of state champions, more state champions, I think, in swimming than any other sport at Elkins High School. Somebody might correct me on that. The Rays, which is the Randolph Area Y Swim Team, is, is an offshoot of the, of the Otters. That is a more expensive team. Those kids will, those kids and their parents add more sacrifices. And they also travel, and they also spend a lot of money out of state going to these swim meets. We'd like to have a pool here that would bring that kind of money to our community. You know, as Vicky said, the swim teams have a vested interest in how succeeding, a pool succeeding. You know, we, if, you know, if we don't have a pool, we don't have a team. It's not like we can go to the next field, you know, like, like, I mean, I remember chasing Little League practice fields as a Little League coach. I mean, you know, that was, that was a, you know, big deal. We don't have that option. We don't have a pool like we did in last year at D and E. You know, we had no Otter season last year. This year, we had no home meets. Six, instead of having six home meets, we had, we had all-away meets. So there was a lot of money that this county lost, and that brings me to my final point. You know, we are but a change in administration at D and E from being on the outs for the Otters. And we've had some good years with them. When I first started, you know, Tom was very complimentary about the program, and he enjoyed having the kids there, and he said, "As long as you cover our costs," which was at the time the lifeguards. I mean, they already had to maintain the pool. You know, they already had to put chlorine in it. So, we had, if there was added costs such as the lifeguards, the Otters paid for that. Then comes along, you know, Buck and Kevin, the next group of guys, and they're like, "No, we're gonna, we need to make money." And I'm like, "Pools don't make money. They, if they're lucky, they break even." But it's, most communities I spoke to when I was doing my research for a community pool, you know, back a few, a year and a half ago, was like, "Yeah, we think it's a good, it's a good use of our funds." I mean, we think for the health of the kids and the health of the community, we need a pool. But Buck was like, "No, you guys are gonna have to pay a lot more," and, and we did. And we raised more money to cover the costs so that our kids didn't have to, still didn't have to pay much. So, like I said, we don't know what the next administration's going to be like, if they have a change. You know, our kids may be on the out, having a public pool that we can add value to in far, as far as revenues, a revenue stream for the county, that would be a good thing. And I would hope, you know, as we said, there's, there's some, it's probably not minor tweaking. I know you guys have been dealing with engineers, and Jared and I have worked with a lot of engineers in our careers, and we're happy to sit down and help any way we can with, with permitting and stuff like that, okay? But I'm just saying, we, it's not, but it is close. We're really close. You don't build a 90-yard football field, okay? Thanks for your time, guys.
John, can I get your phone number? I'd like to get, get back in touch with you.
Yeah.
Be able to do that?
Yep.
Right, right in your, okay. Hey, guys, if, if you're wondering if this is for political purposes, hey, Jared, did I call you, buddy?
You did.
Sir.
We talked over an hour.
Several times, alright. Next.
Help me, is this Chris Uwevoggi?
That's close.
Help me, I'm looking for that.
Ooh, ooh.
What is it?
Oui.
I'm close, that was close.
My name is Chris Uwevoggi. I'm a Tucker County resident. Our family has come and participated with the Otters and the Rays for the past several years. Can I say, swimming is the one thing that gets my daughter excited about participating in anything. We homeschool, she has, I guess I can go, she's ADD, dyslexia, a lot of the things that I can be proud that I passed on to her, not really proud of. But on days that she has swim practice, she makes, she makes sure she gets up early, gets her chores done, gets her schoolwork done, and is motivated to come practice. At practice, then, is where she make, makes good friends, Lily, and is excited about participating. She has other friends and family members in other states and other places that are all excited about their swim practices, and then she's kind of embarrassed in some ways that they don't have home swim meets. So when family comes to visit, she can't take them to a home swim meet because we don't have a pool that can make that happen. One of her goals now in life is to become a lifeguard. So it's one of those that you look at, if this thing happens, you know, it makes her more excited. I guess we're looking at when high school comes around too, possibly to relocate to Randolph County for a potential of that to happen. So then there's also, you know, that other piece going on. We're excited about the splash pad and pool. I think it's just such an asset for a community to be able to have something like that. It's just one of those, I guess, I also do construction, and it's interesting when you come onto a job and someone wants a renovation done compared to doing a new construction. Looking at those dollars and cents pieces just seems like it would be worthwhile to take that time to look, you know, more in-depth at that. I don't know what has been done, but it'd be exciting to see those numbers and make that open to the public to see what's going on, so then we can see where those shortcomings are coming and how, you know, potentially there could be more revenue raised to make that happen. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did provide, Jared, I did provide you a cost estimate of all, all the cost for the pools, I correct?
You, you wrote it over to me, yeah, but I, I couldn't keep up with what you were saying.
Okay.
It went down and down. A cup of coffee would be great.
Yeah, what's your email address?
Jared, J-A-R-E-D, Barner, Victor, at, V as in Victor, A-R-N-E-R, the number four, at gmail dot com. I think I emailed you in March when I first found out about this, too.
Yeah, also, if I, what I'll do, I'll get it to you if you can distribute it to the rest of the group.
Yep.
And that'll, that'll outline all the cost associated with it, okay? Cost of the pool's $377,000, that's the actual cost of the pool itself, so.
Splash pad is what, $325,000?
Yes, I think so. I think that was the number, so, alright. Okay, next.
Ellen Shepherd.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Ellen Shepherd. I am the outgoing president of the Elkins Otters, also a parent. Two swimmers. I work on boards for multiple sports teams as well. So I'm going to speak on, not on our behalf, but my personal. I'm also a special education teacher. I don't know if you know anything about working with special, special education, but I am not permitted to make a decision without all of the data. Everything I do has to be supported with data from multiple sources on multiple days from multiple places. I've asked, I would probably just drown out in all the discussion, but I haven't seen estimates from multiple places of current projects with a competitive pool, without a competitive pool, renovation versus new. Those things help me feel settled when I make a decision. I would hope that you would look into the same. This project is good. It has the potential to be great. We're here for the community, we're here for the team, we're here for our personal kids. Mr. Rich, you mentioned earlier that you're working for the majority. When speaking with someone from the Elks, he told me that the reason they shut down was there wasn't, there weren't enough good weather days to sustain the pool. That there wasn't a steady income, that they couldn't make the money they needed to keep up with what was needed. Well, I'm here to tell you, the Otters provide a steady income. We write large checks to D and E every year. We do what we can to fundraise so that we don't increase those costs to our swimmers. Whether it's thunderstorms or not, we pay for that pool rental. Whether it's working that day or not, we pay for that pool rental. It's a steady income. Additionally, we have fundraised and provided upgrades to things that D and E uses. Those are things that you could look at for your pool. We've created timers. I know Buck Cannon got me blocks for their pool. If you look at each swim team, just like if you know Colton, their basketball program is independent. They have redone that gym. It is beautiful. It has been 100% from that independent sports program, and the whole community uses it. When you look at who would come into our pool, if I look at when I take my kids to meets, we go to Clarksville at noon and swim all day, and we pay that rate, and then we swim our swim team at night. We could have families doing that. When I look at if I'm going to go somewhere, we might as well make a day out of it. My kids like to swim. That would help bring other communities here, increase that income every Tuesday or Thursday, whenever we have that home meet. Or they'll come and say, "Man, this pool's pretty awesome," or "Check out this splash pad. We can bring our siblings over and do this too." When I look at the splash pad, I was super excited about the splash pad when my kids were little, and now they're nine and almost 11, and they wouldn't be interested. They're going to want to come to a pool. I teach in Upsher County, so we've driven to Buck Cannon regularly to use their pool. My kids love it, and then they want to go to a pool that has the slides, so a special trip is going to Weston or Clarksville. And we don't expect that on day one, but we expect the opportunity for expansion. So when we look at when we talk about small versus big and looking at our budget, it's easy to add on to a splash pad. It's easy to add pieces on. Buck Cannon's done it, Clarksville's done it, Weston's done it. It's not easy to add feet on to a pool. So if we look at that initial cost and where the money should go, that's what's not going to be limited. When I look at what our swim team provides, in addition to hunting the pool, as Vicky mentioned, they provide lifeguards. Additionally, when I work with Seneca Soccer, when I work with my gymnastics team, everywhere we go, we want our facility to look good. Our kids are going to make sure it's clean, our kids are going to make sure that everything is taken care of. We're going to make sure that things are updated. We're going to make sure that you have that help to keep that facility in working order because it's important to our teams and our families. We have a phenomenal group of families. They pull together and make things happen that I never would imagine and have not seen in any other sports league that I've been in. They work together from ages 18 to 5. They're phenomenal. You're going to miss out on a great group of people if we don't look at that expansion. I'm not asking for anything new, as Judy, or as Vicky mentioned, we were here in January 2020, talking the same thing, giving the same speech, asking for something to be here. We're not here advocating just for our team because our team does have D and E. Our team is not going to end if you don't expand this. But when I look at what people are going to fundraise for, they're not going to fundraise for a pool twice. No business is going to give money twice. So when the Elks doesn't succeed because it's not big enough to have that sustained funding, that constant source, and we come back and say, "Hey, we need a competitive pool," the answer's going to be no, because they've already given money to a pool. I don't want it to be not successful. I want a kid in the community. As a special education teacher in Jennings Randolph, our kids need something to do. Not the toddlers. I'm not worried about them starting drugs or getting into trouble, but those kids that are older that have nothing to do except hang out in city park where I have to tell my kids not to touch the needles, we need to give them something good. And I feel like we're missing that opportunity. When I look at what swim can provide, my daughter's a competitive gymnast. She's not a huge fan of swim, but I make her do it because it's so much better than every other sport for her body. My son has Evers disease. He can't do a lot of running, but his body is so much healthier because of swim, and it doesn't hurt. They're not the only kids. There's lots of kids with stories like that. There's kids, like John has said, that don't have the money to do Seneca, don't have money for Y basketball, don't have the money for gymnastics. We find the money. We make sure no kids left out. We look for kids who we think could benefit from the program. I know that coaches have even helped provide rides. We make sure that everyone's taken care of. And I think that if we had a facility that allowed us to bring more kids in the community, we could really make a big difference here. We're just asking that unlike what your pool page said, that this decision is final, and we're moving on like this, that you stop, take a breath, and make sure that this really is the best investment of the community, community's money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harvey Taylor.
How's it feel being a commissioner today, guys? Hey, I come here for one reason. First of all, I heard about the splash pad. I was called to ask if I would help with the mayor of Ann-Browden about eight, 10 years ago. I was overwhelmed. It didn't go. So about two and a half years ago, I got a call from Dave Keesling, "Would you meet me at Bob Evans', let's have some breakfast?" I said, "Okay, give me 20 minutes." So, I went down, I made him, he says, he told me he's going to run for commissioner, and me and Dave was on the Board of Education together for four years. And I said, "Are you going to go through with it?" That's the first thing I think I asked him, and he said, "Yeah." "Would you help me?" I said, "I'll be there." Then I went to the meetings with them at 4-H, where they asked them to take the pool, some of the Otter parents was there. But here is my opinion. I think the Otters is a great program. I can remember the page on the Intermountain, I do not know what year, but they won a state championship, and there's a bunch of kids coming out of the swimming pool that they won and all that. I remember that, just like yesterday. I could, I was president of Little League for 15 years, I coached nine years. I know what it's like to have kids get championships. I know. It, it's, your kids is all you got around here. I'm a grandfather of 10 in Randolph County. And I don't want nobody mad at me, but my opinion is, I would like to ask you a couple of questions, if I may, okay? What is, you're taking the pool out at the Elks. I know the Elks failed because, it failed because you just had a pool. Nothing for younger kids. What would it cost to put that pool in? A new one? Do you have the price of that, that you can answer that question, or no?
I don't think we've got a price of replacing the whole.
Just say if it's three, I've heard Mark say $330,000 for the pool.
No, 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 no. Yes, that's, that was the, that's what we're going to pay.
Okay.
And at first, at first, I said that the additional was going to be $300,000. However, at that point, I talked to the engineers, and it was supposed to be a two-foot expansion. What's being asked for is a 15-foot expansion, and I've been told that on the deep end, it needed to be an additional 13 feet, but Jared said, he's, I guess he left.
We talked to, yeah, we talked to Gil Robinson. I talked to them on Monday. And to, and they've looked at the size of the Elks pool as it is, and they overlaid what a 25-meter pool would do, and from a low end to a high end estimate would be, because you have to take out the shallow end of the pool to make it, it has to be like four feet or something, he said, deep. It'd be, low end's $350,000, high end's $612,000. It'd be, low end's three hundred and fifty, high end's six hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
So if it's six hundred and twelve thousand, just to put the Olympic-sized pool in?
A twenty-five meter.
Twenty-five, okay. And your lines, right? You gotta have lines?
It's a twenty-five meter pool, yeah.
Okay, then I was, listen, set and listen, some of the parents, you know, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have meets. And weekends, if I'm not mistaken, he said that they have tournaments. So you got three days for people in this community to use the pool?
No.
Am I correct? Okay, okay, I must be misunderstood. Here, here's my opinion. You're looking at six hundred and some thousand, if that would put in the regular pool that me and you met, we talked about, and a splash pad. I'm just here as grandpa, I don't have nothing against Otters whatsoever. I've got ten grandchildren in this county, and all I've heard from fundraising twenty-one years now is, when we're gonna have a splash pad, can you help?
Yeah.
When you wanna set it up? I, I wish, I hope the Otters can, but my opinion is, if you get a grant, that you gotta match a grant, I've been in meetings and that's what y'all said. If you get a hundred thousand dollar grant, you gotta have a hundred thousand dollars to match. I'm just saying offhand, okay? Understood maybe a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, and you gotta match a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, am I correct?
Depends on the grant.
Okay, just say, if you get that, then all we have to do is come up to, for a, say another two hundred thousand to complete the whole thing. Okay? If you do that, me and about a fifty to a hundred more people will make it happen. If you're gonna do that. But I will help, I, I got nothing against, I'd like to have a million dollars, write you a check right now, do this. I haven't got nothing, but I am like Judy, I'm sitting here, I'm looking countywide. The reason the Elks failed is one reason. It's a pool. The YMCA's got basketball program, I love their programs down there, they got the pool, they got it all. You know, more than one thing you can do. If the Elks got this pool, and you can use recyclable water, you have your fifty gallon drums in there with chlorine and everything there to do this. I've been doing some research on this since we've talked. But my opinion is, I don't have nothing against no one in this county, I swear to you I don't. I don't have nothing against no kid, I help any kid anytime. But I think that you are elected officials. You gotta go countywide like this program started. That's how you started this pool. Splash pad and pool, didn't say what size pool. If you can, they're talking about budgets. I've done budgets eight years on the Board of Education, thirty-six million dollars, thirty-three million dollars. If you're gonna do a budget, you got a budget here that's gonna put you one pool in for the Otters and everyone in the county, or you got a budget here that's gonna put you the regular-sized pool in and the splash pad together for the same price. Do your budget. Can I go out this way? I gotta do it with short time.
No, not sure.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next caller, MacFadden.
Colin, I've gotta take a break real quick. I'm drinking about two and a half gallons of water a day, plus my kidneys. You guys see I've been drinking, I've already been going through one cup. If you'd like for me to hear the comments, we can take a brief recess for about five minutes. If you're okay, for my fellow commissioners to listen, you can go ahead.
That's fine, thanks. Commissioners, friends, fellow residents of Randolph County, my name is Colin McFadden. I moved here about ten months ago. I've got my wife and four kids, ages ten, eight, six, and four. I've been really pleasantly surprised, thrilled to see what a dynasty of a swim team Elkins has created without, without an outdoor swimming pool. Shocking, my, my six-year-old went from not being able to swim across the length of, of the D and E pool to Hannah and a couple other coaches present helping him. He's been, been a competitive swimmer the rest of the season. I think this outdoor swim pool with competitive twenty-five meter, twenty-five yard length, it represents a tremendous opportunity for this community to, to rally around what I think is the heart of the community. Kit, teaching kids life skills and then creating jobs for, for the kids. They'll be the lifeguards and the concession stand workers, as has been said. I think, I think that's a tremendous opportunity that I look forward to participating in and helping, helping to see succeed. I think, I wanna, I wanna bring, bring up one quick story over the past, I, I got out of the army a couple of years ago, and one of the silver linings there, moving, moving all over the world, was being able to see and experience a lot of different communities, and in this case, a lot of different pools, from, from splash pads to indoor pools, outdoor pools, competitive length and, and not. Just, splash pads are fun. When it's hot, we take our kids to, to a local splash pad in Kansas, and you'd be there for an hour or so, and then, then it'd be time to go. But a, a outdoor pool with, with a competitive length where, where a swim team can meet is fun for the entire day. And where we moved from in Virginia, it would be a normal summer day, my wife would take our, our kids to the pool first thing in the morning for swim practice, and I would meet them there after work, and we'd have dinner at the pool, they would've been there all day. I think, I think this is a tremendous opportunity to build community in a healthy way. Next.
Yep, thank you.
Ashley Jaeger.
Hello.
Hello.
So I have one swimmer, I have another future swimmer, she was hindered this year because of COVID. She was so excited to get to join the swim team, and then because she was indoor at D and E in the Y, and parents weren't allowed to go in during practices because of that, or at least that was one of the reasons, I couldn't bring myself to let her swim, because I couldn't actually physically have eyes on her to make sure she was not drowning, call attention to it. And I'm sure our coaches are wonderful, they've probably done it, but I am an overprotective, overprotective parent, so I couldn't bring myself to do that. We are praying that we will have two swimmers this coming year that will swim as long as they're in my house. It's not an option to stop, because my husband and I are not strong swimmers. I've lived in Randolph County my entire life, I've never left Randolph County. I don't have plans on leaving Randolph County at the moment. But I want to see more for my kids than what I had growing up, and I'm so grateful that you guys are wanting to do that, you're wanting to look forward and bring in a pool, but our indoor pools aren't gonna cut it. D and E is closed right now. There's no reopening date. We've emailed, we've called, they don't know when it's gonna open back up to the public. Anytime my kids and I go to D and E pool, there are so many swimmers there that are older. They are the older generation who are lap swimming and outswimming me by a long shot. I am not a strong swimmer, I need my kids to be strong swimmers. I need them to have the opportunities that I didn't have. It's exercise for all ages. Having a little pool is fun for the kids of Randolph County, but it's not building up their skill. It's not providing them with what they need. Sorry, I'm nervous, I don't like talking in front of people. My mom had a knee replacement a couple of years ago, she used the D and E pool as her physical therapy. There are college students who come there while we're doing lap swimming, while the older generations there having lap swimming. They're training for other sports as well, with weights on their bodies, basically running across the pool. They're, they need these things, and we're not being offered that right now because of COVID. And I know that's not your problem, it's not your fault, but every pool that we went to for meets this year, were all outdoor pools. We didn't have that option. We could never host states here, we could never bring in that revenue to our local businesses, to our hotels, without having that outdoor pool that's capable of hosting four hundred swimmers plus their families. My one swimmer had six people there. We went out, we, went out to dinner, we went shopping, we stayed two nights in a hotel. This is revenue that's coming into other counties that we can't provide. The outdoor pool, different things that it offers to not only the kids of Randolph County and the other counties that are coming, but to, to all the adults as well. It's safer to have that open air, to have sunlight, vitamin D, it's safer for everybody. Right now, nobody wants to be in enclosed places. I'm surprised there's this many people here today because of COVID and because of mask mandates and everything. But to go out in the open, you have that natural filtering system. Look forward to the future for income for the upkeep. What shut Otter, or what shut down the pool to begin with is, this is great for right now, but what about future revenue? That's what we are needing, is that future revenue to be able to bring in. They've talked about wanting to do public donations, community fundraising, different things like that, be open to that. Help us, I want to stay here. I want this county to offer things that makes me never want to leave my kid, take my kids out of this county. But I need to be able to see that that's something that's in the future. And I know in my heart, because I've lived here, I've seen the things, you guys see the backlash that you get from things, whatever we get now is probably all we're ever gonna get. I hate, I hate to say that. I hate to think that my kids don't mean enough to people to want to better their future, to bring in more kids their age, and to build up our county. We have the potential to make this a great project. We have the potential to bring in families and expand our community, but we have to show that we care about the kids, all the kids, not just some of them. It's kind of like, would you put in a football field that's too short to play a game, but just take what you can get? We don't want that. This is all we're gonna, this is our one shot to get top of some of the kids. Like, like Ellen said, nobody's gonna donate twice. That's all.
Ashley, thank you.
My turn to read now?
Yep, yes, sir.
All right. Melody Price, I'm in favor of a community pool, I was told to use this email address to cast a vote in favor of the pool. Lisa Lewis, first off, thank, I wanna thank all of you that have been involved in making this happen. I personally feel the purpose was for all the kids of all ages to have a safe place to swim, splash, and play, and that the less fortunate that don't have the funds or means to go to the other counties for a fun day of splashing around and cooling off in our own area. Of course, we all want bigger and better, but sometimes we have to come to our means and accept what we have the funds for. The project proposed fits just what the county needs for those of all, of all income levels. When all is said and done, I hope donations, fundraisers, and sponsorships happen to help keep operation costs down so that admission costs stay low, and those that can afford to pay for the children that are less fortunate their way in the splash pad and pool. Thanks again for all that you've done, helped make this happen. I, as many others that I know, appreciate your efforts and hope to see this happen.
Sheriff, if I could take a brief recess, Kirk.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sarah Hayden, I am sending you this message in regards to the proposed splash pad. I'm in full support of this project, I was wondering if you could give me an idea of when this is going to happen? I was hoping it would have already, would have already, as this would be an awesome place to go in Randolph County. Thanks for your attention. Barbie Hendrick, I do support the idea of a splash pad in Elkins, I feel the kids in this area need that. The surrounding counties already have one, and I feel it's not fair that our families have to go to another county to enjoy it. My name is Linda Shomo, and my husband is Charles Shomo, we both vote yes for a community pool, as it is written, thank you. Rosemary Wentz, please continue plans for the splash pad for Elkins and the surrounding areas. As we know, kids are our greatest resource, things are limited here for them at this time. This would give all kids an activity that is healthy and wholesome, whether they are in sports or dance or not, and just would benefit from time away from the screen, the screen or couch. That's as much needed for our area. If we don't put our money into the kids' futures, what are we putting it into? I was, um, this is from Erica Swacker. I was emailing to say that I support the splash pad for our area children in Elkins. I think this would be a great way to, for the children to enjoy their summer vacation without having to travel to another county. Peggy Young Ross, I am out of town, cannot be at the commission meeting today. Please note that I am one hundred percent behind the commission's plans for the swimming pool. Splash pad is the project manager on this. For grant and funding purposes, I've seen firsthand the research and work that they, they have put into this over the past two years. They have met with professionals and have hired an excellent engineering firm. They are doing everything that can be, can and should be done for a specific project. James Gaynor, commissioners, please reconsider your decision on a community pool. Pool that would allow for lap swimming competitions would be able to serve a larger portion of our community constituency than a smaller pool and splash pad. Why settle for just a place to get wet? There, there have been hundreds of families whose kids have learned to swim well and have fun competing in other, in the Otters swim program. My family and my five kids are testament to that, please don't settle, do it right, James Gaynor. Kelsey Hammer, I vote yes for a community splash pad pool. Please get more in for the kids in Elkins so they are not getting wrapped up in how bad the drugs and negativity is. Jesse and Elsie Shreve, we are voting yes for a community pool. London Matthews, I, as a taxpayer in Randolph County, do not think the pool at the Elks Club needs to be any bigger than it is. This is for the children of Randolph County to enjoy, not just a few who wanna use it for athletic purposes. I don't think that a few people should be able to influence this. It is not fair to use the money of a taxpayer, especially those who are elderly and the flavor of a few. This is the main reason Randolph County can't pass a school level. The money is never used wisely or as promised. Please do not change the size or usage of the pool, let our families have a place to enjoy without having to go out of county. DJ Brookens, I vote yes, the kids need more to do around the town. Bobby Hammer, I vote yes. Thank you, Sean. Pat Lewis, I would like to show my thanks and support from the committee that has supported the splash pad for years. Our citizens have complained, we, we need a pool for our kids. After much work and planning, it is now a reality, plus there is no expense to taxpayers. We cannot be kid-like and think the more we get, the more we deserve. It has taken lots of work and dedication to get us this far. We need to appreciate what we have, this has been in the works for a long time. Why wait until it is in our grasp before saying we can raise the money? What steps has been made for this process? Are the rest of our kids going to have to wait years to get a pool? I urge the county commission to please follow through with their plans and to consider all the kids, the ones that, the ones that can't go out of town, or the ones that have no pool at all. The ones that are grateful for all the hard work, please, work these people have, I'm sorry, grateful for all the work, hard work these people have put into bringing joy to our children. Thank you so much, Pat Lewis. Donna Atkinson, I support the splash pad. Christine Tony, please know we are fully behind the comments, that will be made by John Schmidt on Thursday at the upcoming meeting.
Good, John, there's a vote conference, man.
Elkins, part of it's cutoff, so I'm having to guess here. Elkins desperately needs a large enough pool to support the community swim team lap swimming, and that covers the entire county for a community pool. What is currently planned is completely inadequate, please be willing to hear and really listen to those who have invested years into the lives of our children and know what they speak. Many, many are willing to contribute to the project, thank you for your consideration. This is, uh, Randolph County Commission, we are writing to ask members, decision-makers of Randolph County to revisit planning and implementation of the Elks swimming pool construction. Swimming in Randolph County has grown significantly since our daughter was nine years old, starting her sport with the Elka daughters. And yes, swimming is recreation, but it is also a sport. And Randolph County has produced numerous athlete swimmers. These athletes went on to swim throughout their youth, the local swim club participated in swim, club swimming, with the YMCA competing at a high school level, represent their school in sectional, regional, and state meets, and some continued competition throughout college. Our daughter Delaney was an athlete who completed at all these levels, finished her career at Princeton University, where she was a member of four years and team captain her senior year. Accessing pool time was rarely easy while she lived at home. There were many summer months spent waking at five AM, make a drive to Buchanan for swim practice and Upshur County swimming pool. She would return to Elkins mid-morning and go to work at the Elks pool, where she worked as a lifeguard. Having an accessible regulation-length pool locally would have made such a difference. We, we were fortunate that we could support her travels to other counties for practice. The local youth swim club, the Elkins Otters, has experienced tremendous growth in the past decade, with more and more youth developing an interest in competitive swimming as, as a sport, not just for fun. Imagine what your decisions regarding this project could mean to those athletes now and for years to come. Thank you for consideration, develop the resource necessary to promote swimming as a sport locally. As we've learned with our daughter and her teammates, these kids are good. They represent Randolph County very well in all levels of competition. A great facility will enable A great facility will enable even more Randolph County youth to participate and never know the door, and you never know the doors that may open for them. Mike and Peggy Johnson. Gentlemen, thank you for your time, taking time for this email. Is considered a possible splash pad swimming pool that you're looking to develop at the Elks County Club in Hazelwood. First of all, I'd like to, I like the idea. You have always felt something like this would go well in the county, not just the kids, but the adults as well. God bless YMCA and Davidson Elkins College for the use of their pools, but with set times and usages, it's sometimes hard to get in. Besides, there's nothing like the outdoors. I would like to see in addition to the suggested swimming splash area, I would like to see the pool made accessible for those that come to get, uh, to work out in with a swim, even for a lap pool area. This just doesn't benefit those young kids and adults that practice for their respective teams, but also for the adults. I worked in Parkersburg and with part of a health club, many of, many a day, in the mornings and evenings, adults came in to get their, in their work, their workout in. Another formula in the area intended for the community, let's include the entire community. We encourage those kids that belong to the swimming program at the Y and at the Elkins High and D and E. And for the future, might encourage a sw- swimming program for Tagus Valley High School. Please keep in mind, talk it over before a final decision. One, one last concern, will there be enough parking? The parking there is, is not just for the swimming pool splash pad, but for the golfers and the Elks Club members. I'm sure this has been talked about. It could, couldn't hurt to take another look. We also might want to put a warning like the people can see before they enter the area coming from both sides. People will be crossing the road for golf and pulling in and out with their cars coming and go from the area. Club Mark. All right, the last one is Kate, my name is Caitlin Wonnings. I am a current resident of Elkins. I write you this evening since I work and will be unable to attend the meeting that is scheduled for Thursday on 30. As a former member and a current supporter of the Elkins Otters and Elkins High School swim team, I am saddened to have to write this letter today. Being a member of these swim teams has allowed me to form friendships and learn lifelong lessons. As I write this, I reflect on what my time as a swim team member has meant. And yes, I am very fortunate to have had the opportunity to swim at a competitive level. I do think that the Otters do a great job to make swimming competitive an option for everyone. Scholarships are available and carpooling is an option to get everyone to practice and meets. During my years on the swim teams, I've seen many pools, almost all of which are outside competition sized pools. Buchanan, Clarksburg, Schinston are just a few on the long list that I've been to. Honestly, I can't even think of a pool that doesn't have an ability to accommodate a competi- a competition. These pools function as a competitive and leisure pool together. The pool is open to the community during the day and only closes in the evening, one or two times a week, if that, for events, practices. Completed early in the morning, therefore there are no conflicts or scheduling or interference for public use of the pool. Lap swim is also an option and will bring in more revenue. Many people like to have the lanes to use swimming as an exercise since it is a very beneficial workout for a variety of ages. Not having that ability will greatly impact the use of the pool in a negative way. With the current plans, I can tell you that I will continue to drive to Clarksburg, Buchanan or Weston to visit a nicer pool with greater amenities. I do realize not everyone has a lot of time, but that is my personal choice and I am sure that I am not alone in that. I want to spend my money here and help our community grow. But as it stands, I will spend my money elsewhere. Currently, the Otters use the Davidson Elkins Pool and for that, we are all grateful. It is, uh, if it weren't for the use of the D and E pool, there would be no swim team for Elkins. The Otters have been incredibly successful over the years and they, as a team, deserve a pool that can compare to the surrounding counties. When I see other counties that, uh, are willing to build pools and put the interests of kids first, it makes me wonder if Randolph County is truly the right place to raise my two kids. I understand that this is not a simple project, but if, but if money is being spent to, on doing an existing pool and adding a splash pad, is there not another option to build something that will be win, a win-win for everyone? Can it at least be discussed in a professional manner in a setting where people are available to attend instead of thought being automatically turned down? I hope, I hope that my voice as well as others are heard and I hope that the commission really considers what they're doing in our community. Sincerely, Caitlin.
That's a good workout for your new contacts.
Yeah. And I can't, it's blurry, it's so foggy.
At this time, do either of my fellow commissioners have anything to say or are you going to withhold till public, till the discussion?
I'll roll the next item on the agenda.
All right, that's fine. We'll go ahead to minutes, approval of minutes of meetings. Do you have a motion?
Yep. I'll move to approve the special session of the Randolph County Commission meeting, which was held July 22nd at 1:30, 2021.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve the minutes of the special call meeting on July 22nd at 1:30. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all his favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we accept the minutes of our regular session that we had on the 15th of July at 1:30.
All right, I know she's got it. Okay, sorry. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on 15th of July. Is presented or in discussion? Hearing none, all his favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is reports. Uh, do we have a report from you? Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, nothing to report this time. I see we're on the agenda for hiring process later on. It all contains to that.
Kirk?
No reports, sir.
Sheriff?
No reports.
Brandon? All right, anybody else, uh, okay. All right, uh, correspondence. Yes. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Hannah. Hannah, throw something at me.
That's cool. Hey, I just wanted to take this opportunity since there's so many people here, um, to let you know what we've been doing with your money. So if our community, um, has seen our painted sidewalks, like the active packways at all of the elementary schools, and we just got another one painted, um, in town in front of like S and T B's and Mama Mia's and around the corner there. Um, if you're wondering who did that, that, um, the stencils were purchased by the WDU Extension Service, um, with funding from the county commission. That's part of our regular budget and we're just really thankful for that. But I, so I just wanted to say that, uh, while there were so many people here, in case they wondered, uh, where those things came from. And, um, I also just wanted to let, give you an update on our summer because our summer is coming to an end and we are starting to look at back to school programming. Uh, of course, it's up, up in the air as to whether we're going to be in the schools or it's going to be virtual or hybrid again. But we did have two 4H camps that were in person, that they were day camps and they were very successful. I've heard people had lots of fun, which was really great because they weren't overnight as they normally are. And then we were also able to take a group of, um, 13 or 14 kids to Jackson's Mill, um, for just three days. So it was different than normal, but, uh, we've been able to still, you know, keep the kids involved and that's really great. And, um, is Estrid still here? Jared, tell her how-how.
Okay, tell her how-how.
I do, because I, part of, if you're unfamiliar with the 4H program, which is through WDU Extension and funded by the county commission a lot, um, you know, civic engagement is a big part of what we do. And I was just so pleased to see Estrid up here. Whatever your opinion may be, to see these kids here and to see Estrid talking was just really awesome. And I would love to invite her and all of you children to be in, in the 4H program. So that's all I had to say. I just wanted to like, give you an update about just a little bit of what we were doing over the summer.
Thank you, Hannah. I'm sorry I missed you.
No worries.
Anybody else? Anybody else just throw a brick at me, please make it like one of those phone ones, though.
They make a good shot.
All right, any correspondence, Brooke? Have any correspondence? Okay, announcements. Our next, um, meeting of the Randolph County Committee, uh, Commission will be on the 19th here at the courthouse annex at 1:30. All right, items for discussion?
We have a special call meeting on Monday.
Oh, that's correct. Thank you. Uh, special call meeting, 9:00 a.m. on Monday, this coming Monday.
Then the regular meeting will be?
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry about that. Guys, I'm gonna blame everything that happens to me for the rest of my life on my struggle. All right, you guys okay with that? All right. Um, items for discussion and action are, uh, item eight is consider approval of engineering designs for the Randolph County's pool and splash pad project. Uh, before we, uh, get into, uh, comments from the commissioners, um, I noticed during some of the, uh, public comment that, uh, some of the people in the crowd disagreed verbally. You can't do that to commissioners, guys. If you do that, you'll be gabbled. If you continue to do that, you'll be removed. All right? We've heard you guys. We've been talking to you for literally a week and, uh, even longer from, from back to January, okay? So, um, we will, um, now take comments from our commissioners.
Appreciate it. Well, I, I mean, everybody brings up good points and that's what we're all here for, to listen. You have different ideas and views, so. But like I said, this project we've been started on and we tried to keep it out in public what was going on, best we could to keep everybody advised of what, where we are and what we're doing, so.
And Chris, we appreciate your expertise, your, your, your experience, um, you know, knowing the pool and things and, you know, knowing everybody involved. It's been extremely beneficial. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
I know that, um, when I ran it three years, started running it three years ago, thing that I wanted to do was, uh, because I've heard from people in the county, they wanted something for the kids to do. One of them that came up was a splash pad. And that was one of the things that I ran on was a splash pad. And this, when the project started, it was a splash pad. And then we had, we failed meetings and then it bloomed into a pool. And so we've looked around, we reached out to the city of Elkins. We had, um, the city of Elkins, council members and mayor here in this very room. We brought down people from Clarksburg, from their, uh, that runs their pool. Um, we had people from companies that represent the pools, um, to try to partner with, because one big explain, so it's not in, it's not in the city of Elkins. Now, we worked, we tried to work with the city of Elkins. It went through their, um, committee, one of their committees. It never made it out, never made it out of that committee. And we got notification that they were not interested in pursuing, uh, our partnership with us on the pool. We went to the, well, county owns, uh, property throughout the county. Well, let's look at, let's look at some of the property throughout the county. We went to the rec board. Uh, the 4H was a, uh, another potential site for a pool splash pad. Their board didn't want anything to do with the pool. Um, I sat at that time on that board and was, you know, they, it was a no starter with them. Um, we looked at other sites throughout the county, um, and one, people thought, well, the, the Elks, um, Y went out. You know how long the Elks Pool was, has been around? It's been around 62 years that thing's been open. And so I don't feel that, I don't think that's a failure there. I know I went there as a kid, my children's went there as, as, when they were growing up. We enjoyed it, we spent all day there, um, and I want my grandchildren to have something like that, potentially one day, whenever I have grandkids.
You've never had your grandkids. Me too, I'm driving my kids.
What we're intending this all along was a recreation. It started out as a splash pad, a recreational pool. And for all the kids, and I'm not saying, no, we're not saying about any group or anything, but everybody can, will be able to use this pool. It's a good thing for the county. We talked about financial, uh, bringing, you know, bringing money to the county. This will bring money to the county. I think they'll go to the splash pad in Parsons. There's a lot of our county residents go to the splash pad in Parsons. And now all it is over there is a splash pad. That's one of the things I looked at when I started this, you know, this idea about a splash pad. When Parsons can have a splash pad, why can't Elkins have a splash pad, right, or Randolph County? So people will travel to Elkins for a pool splash pad. They will buy gas, they will buy food, they will go to their restaurants, they will buy stores here in town. They will, it will, not just making a competitive pool, not having a competitive pool, doesn't mean that it, it won't benefit the county financially. It will benefit the county financially. So we, we have, it has been an exhausting three years and, um, we finally have met, um, uh, with an engineering company. We had, we put it out. Uh, we met with two engineering companies over this, uh, project. We chose E.L. Robinson, who has been great to work with on this project. They have looked at, you know, all this pushback about a competitive pool. You know the, the layout of Elks, you know, how the hillside is there? Um, like I stated before, there's a high-end look, there's a, a low-end look and there's a demo, uh, cost to, uh, if we had to demo at the pool, because again, the shallow end is not conducive with a competitive pool. It would just change the whole structure of what is there. Thirty to forty thousand dollars demo, 350 to 612,000 dollars to redo that, just for the competitive, you know, just make it a competitive pool. Um, we have looked at it and, um, I feel, um, that the project as presented, um, is the most viable thing for the county. And that's how, that's what I might take on it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, I have a few comments as well. Um, how many, uh, swimmers are left with us? If you're a swimmer, stand up, please, if you would. If you're a coach, stand up, all right? Yeah, wave at me, all right? Thank you, guys. You may be seated. We want you to know, although we may not agree, um, we've heard you. We understand what you're looking for. The problem is, the county can't afford it. Period. Folks, we run, the last two years under the leadership of myself for the first year, Commissioner Keesling the second year, me again this year. Guys, we run, we had an $80,000 budget deficit the first, after the six months of, of my term as commission president. I actually did it here, but you ought to understand, the first six months was under the previous budget by the previous commission president. That six months, $80,000. Last year, we ran $150,000 deficit, uh, budget, uh, surplus, not a deficit. I'm sorry, don't with me. This year, we're going to lose money. I'll tell you why. We have, um, Columbia Gas and Transmission revalued project. It cost us $340,000 because what they did is they took, um, the project, they were giving it all to Randolph County before. Now it's being given to several different counties. We lost $340,000 revenue. Folks, we gotta run a county here. We have to pay the bills. And I'm telling you, there's been other counties that have had irresponsible government and they've not been able to pay their bills. This commission is going to be physically responsible. We would love, love, love to have competitive, a competitive pool in this county because you all could, as mentioned by someone, I think it was Jared, but I'm not sure, five to six dual meets per year. In addition, every now and then, if the, if the facility is nice enough, you could host the state program or state competition. We'd love to have that. Guys, you know what that would do to our hotel tax revenue for that weekend? I'll tell you what, look at the hillbilly hardball classic, you don't have to look any further. They have teams all over the community, the, the families of the teams and the teams are in the, in the, um, they're spending money in the restaurants and they're staying in our hotels. We would love, absolutely love to have that, but we have to be able to pay for this thing. We've offered to help, uh, the group if you are, um, I know that, uh, you've been mentioning, or you've mentioned that if this doesn't work, that you're interested in getting your own, building your own, doing your own fundraising. Uh, you're gonna find out that our fundraising goal is small compared to what you all would raise. I found out earlier today that there is a site, I've spoken to the mayor of that town and he has said, yes. If you all meet certain conditions, which would be, if namely, that you come up with the funding, that you come up with an engineered plan and you come up with a bid that has been approved and comes within your budget, they will donate the property. And that's a big, uh, footprint for that donated property, for you all to have a competitive pool and for you all to have adequate parking around that pool. It's been mentioned earlier, the amount of time that's been put into this, guys. We have 100 hours, I have 100 hours of research. David's got, I don't know how much. Uh, we've put a lot of time into this. We interviewed, um, both engineering firms. We felt most comfortable, quite honestly, E.L. Robinson's presentation blew us away. They brought ideas to the table that we hadn't even thought about. They continue to do that. Furthermore, they have relationships with at least 30 companies that have done pool projects throughout the state. They can bring those people to us to help us do this project. Then we'll do it right, we'll do it on time and we'll do it in budget. Uh, this project, guys, if you don't mind, Brooke, David, do you mind grabbing the boards and just stepping out there and letting them see it?
Did you bring it down in front?
Yep, it's right there.
Put it down in front.
Wanted you guys to see this, see this project. We can't take questions now, okay? The project started with a splash pad, as David said. The pool, the pool came to us really by, by, almost by accident. Uh, when we found out about the Elks Pool, we went, wow. We thought about the nostalgia that was, that had, has all the people, like your, your kids, my kids, uh, you swimming there. 62 years of Elks. Sixty-two years of Elkins and Randolph County residents swimming at this pool. And we get an opportunity to keep it. We get an opportunity to have that pool for another, maybe fifty or sixty years. The project start, see, fundraising was announced earlier today at an earlier meeting. The commissioners and the sheriff have all agreed to pitch in a thousand dollars apiece to get the fundraising for our part, for our project started. What that is gonna be is, we need a concession area that was not a part of the original plans. We estimate that that concession area, which won't be very big, plus the appliances that are needed within it, will cost approximately fifty thousand dollars. So we've got four thousand dollars already, I'm pretty sure we can get the other forty-six thousand dollars raised before the time of the project starts. I want to thank our sheriff, I think you were the first one that stepped up. Want to thank Commissioner Keesling, Commissioner C.
And yourself.
Well, thank you, thank you. But we're gonna get that money raised to be able to do that concession area, where we can have concessions and have the appliances that need to be done. There are three ways to pay for a project like this. You can pay for it with cash, you can borrow the money, generally it's done through bonds, or you can, you can do a levy, alright? We decided that we needed to do it using cash, because borrowing the money through levies, you have interest that's associated with that. You all, listen, this pool will benefit hundreds of kids in this county. There are thirty thousand residents of Randolph County. Those taxpayers expect us to keep the budget, to keep within our budget, and we intend to do that. A levy. Well, let's see, how we done with levies in the past, guys? We've had one in the last ten years. Folks, thirty thousand senior citizens are not gonna vote for their tax, property taxes being increased for us to have a pool. So that's why we knew going in, we're gonna need cash. This is a million dollar project. I told Jared, I've got a, got a note, I'm gonna send you the estimate, we're gonna get it out. It's a billion dollar project, it's being funded with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in hotel motel tax, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in coal severance tax, and the engineering costs is being paid for, it's a hundred and, what, guys, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, something like that? That's being paid for by the coal severance reallocation tax. The additional amount, which is five hundred thousand dollars, will be paid for through our funding if we're able to get the project approved. Commissioner Keesling's already got a contact in the auditor's office, we'll be contacting them to make sure that we can get approval. If we do, that will be five hundred thousand dollars. You all know that that money was given to us by the federal government, that's your money, okay? It's two point six billion dollars total, and we've received so far requests for about three million dollars. So we're gonna take a sizable chunk of that in order to do this part of the project, if we're able to get it, get it approved. If we can, what that means is, we get a pool, we get a splash pad, and if it comes in on time, we get it next year. So I did take note, I thought a great suggestion was a warning light for the pool entrance, so we might have to increase the fundraiser by a few hundred bucks, so, alright? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the engineering design for the Randolph County Pool Splash Pad Project as presented.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries, alright. Thank you all for coming, really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, if you do, please sit down, we've gone an hour and a half already. Thank you guys very much. I'll be in touch with you, Jared, John, and then Jared, Jared Varner. Thank you guys.
Next item.
Alright, next item on the agenda is information, let's see, actually, let's move a couple items, it's okay with you guys. First one is consideration of approval for three part-time hires, if we can have you all come up. Jim's gonna present, what's your name again?
Hillary.
Alright, sorry Hillary.
It's okay.
Let me tell you what happened, I've got a stroke, I've lost my short-term memory completely. Yeah, it's weird, go ahead Jim.
We have been exhausting ourselves interviewing people, we've interviewed about a hundred and seventy-five people, I may not have given you the right one with your name on it, but.
Hey, it feels like you wiped off your gift. Brandon, here you go.
They're all the same. I've submitted three names to you for approval as employees for the nine-one-one center. These three people will be hired in with your permission at part-time employees, they'll be hired in on a ninety-day probationary period. As you're aware, there were three that you hired in last month. Those three, two of them are working out real well. Unfortunately, one of the two only wants to work part-time. And the third one that was employed, that was hired, has since elected not to take the position. So we've opened up interviews again, Hillary's done some extensive interviews, along with other staff at the office, and we've come up with these three names.
David's been a big believer, you hire, you kind of manage him, you need to hire, or be, or part of the process, go ahead Jim.
Background checks have already been run on these three people, their references have been checked. We've also issued the drug testing forms, so it's all came back, they're all clear at this point. The training for the two that's still on staff is moving along real well. Not quite ready yet to turn them loose by themselves, but they've been working and moving forward. Ninety days. Starting salary will be eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for these people. The current budget will be as is, we'll need not, we will not need to add any additional funding for that current budget. And we'd like to request that they be effectively hired by August the ninth. One more thing that's come up recently, due to our short staffing, we, Hillary has elected to go from ten-hour shifts to twelve-hour shifts for the month of August only. And there will be no increase in the budget or any adjustments.
It'll cost some overtime though, wouldn't it, Hillary?
Yes.
It'll cost a little bit, but we're down several people at this time, but we'll fill the slots, make sure that we have coverage for the entire county.
Understood, non-benefited positions for all three, is that correct, with the part-time?
There'll be.
No county benefits, okay, very good.
Part-time for the ninety days, at that time we'll reassess and get back with you on our disposition.
Very good Jim.
I make a motion that we approve the hiring of Jared Brady, Benjamin Taylor, and Wesley Frank Taylor. As a part-time employee, all of them are part-time employees with no county benefits, a nine-day probationary period, starting pay of eleven twenty-five an hour. Their nine-one-one's current budget will cover this, these wages and their deployment to begin on Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, motion will force to approve the three hires as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any post, motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda is consideration appointment to EMS board. Thank you all very much, thank you for your patience being with us. Hillary, we're gonna get together soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we have, we've had a couple recently, Jim, if you want to, you can, you can speak, you stood, raise your hand. But we've had some vacancies on the board. It's been tough to get people to come to the meetings for some unknown reason, we've had, we just had a lot of people that, for whatever reasons, we had two, I think, left for medical reasons, if I remember right. So we've had some vacancies on the board. We have a gentleman who has, through, through family, previous experience with emergency services. He is the new professor of criminal justice at the college, and he's passionate about EMS. I've spoken to him at length about this, and I've told him, you gotta be at the meetings. If you don't, if you can't be at the meetings, please don't sign up. His schedule, he says, will have no problem being at the meetings, Jim, that's good news, right?
That is good news, yes.
Alright, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, yeah, one, just one quick question. The person that last filled that position that we have available now was from the Harmony Job Hoover area, and that's the area we need some, but this guy, does he live out there?
No, he's out, he's, he lives in Elkins.
So that'll be another two-six-two-four-one zip code.
Understood.
Which we, we've got plenty.
Yeah.
From that area and, the idea was that we wanted to try to have somebody to have a say from all areas of the county.
But you know, we tried it twice.
I know.
We're over two.
I mean, I don't have an answer to it, I'm just making a statement.
I want you to know, we reached out, we reached out to fire chief over there, I reached out to others to see if there was anybody with any interest, and I didn't hear anything. And, and, yeah, it's about them being able to make the meetings and the travel to come over, is what I'm hearing.
But the worst of it is, the first one we'll be complaining, will be people coming over there.
Absolutely. Well, and our response to the commission, Jim, will be, you show us, you bring somebody to us, and the next opening, we'll consider them. Fair enough?
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
Absolutely, yes sir.
I move that we approve the appointment of Mr. Jamie Morganton, Randolph County Ambulance Authority Board of Directors, and term will begin immediately and set to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Alright, motion on the floor is to approve the appointment of Jamie Morgan to the Ambulance Authority Board of Directors, and he begins immediately and it's set to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. This was a previously held position by Bill Jordan, who, like I said, he had some health issues, I think his family health issues more than anything, but he had to resign. Okay, any discussion? Hearing on all those favors signified by saying aye? Any post? Motion carries. Alright, next item, Jim, we're gonna move K forward, if we, if you don't mind, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we table item K.
Alright, motion will force to table item K, consider appointment to rect, any discussion? Hearing on all those favors signified by saying aye? Any post? Motion carries. Alright, next item, agenda, Karen? Alright. I am C.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am B.
You know what, you deserve the patience, citizen of the, you too.
It is all good, it is all good. Everybody's doing their job.
Karen, do you?
I'll give you the same thing in public comment, I'm gonna have to step out, you won't be caught, you wanna pause, you can, you wanna get started, I'll be back in a couple minutes.
You and I have talked about this, so. I won't take up much time, I'm gonna basically cover kind of this page that I sent you all a couple of weeks ago, I appreciate you asking me to come and make a short presentation. So, I'm Karen Jacobson with the Randolph County Housing Authority. As you know, but perhaps everyone doesn't know, the housing authority does not receive any line item funding from the county commission or any operational funding on a year-to-year basis. We come to the county commission when we either have an investment to be made in a facility, a couple of years ago, the county commission gave us ten thousand dollars, which matched another thirty for some facility improvements and paving. And then the last time we were here was the last time we didn't get our youth build grant, so that has only happened a couple times in the last fifteen years. So we, I'm here to ask for support for our youth build program. The program operates with a grant from Department of Labor that helps us work with about seventy young people over a two-year period who have, have not graduated from high school or who are having other problems engaging in post-secondary or, or jobs, and sort of basically engaging in getting their, getting their life on track. These are young people that are either considered at risk, or the way we consider them is opportunity. So you either have an opportunity to really work with young people who are bound to stay here, to help them become kind of, you know, business owners, employees, taxpayers. Or, or you don't have programs like us and, and, you know, there, there are people who sometimes then get, get in, into trouble. That's the at-risk side. So our program's a proven program, we've been operating since about nineteen ninety-five. We have about eight hundred alums here and in Randolph County and in the region, and they are your local chefs, electricians. We just had someone come in the youth build today, graduating in twenty-twelve, he wanted to give his business card to Otto, the site trainer, so that Otto would know that he has his own construction company now. So these are young people who are staying here and contributing to the county, and that's why I, I feel like while we're asking you to support the program, it's really, we're asking you for an investment, because I think it really pays off. We have put together what we're calling a gap or a bridge year with a really small budget to serve a smaller cohort. We're gonna invite ten young people to join the youth build program this fall, a budget of about a hundred and sixty thousand, and we've asked, we're asking the county for fifteen. The rest of those funds, we're, we've asked the city council for a donation, we're talking with the school board, because we have a really good working relationship with them. Our first effort is always to try and keep young people in school, getting their diploma, if that's possible. But we've been working with them around how we can work together for young people that, that, that's not going to work for this. And then we have, we have other funds in-house that we're redirecting to support this kind of gap year. So the funds from the county commission will help us pay stipends. So it's a seven-month program, and we do stipend to young people so that they can, you know, kind of pay their living expenses while they're, while they're in the program and kind of getting their life together. I'll keep it at that, if you have questions about the program, I'd love to answer them, I know it's been a long meeting.
I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, we talked about it, and that we know we've helped in the past, but not this, where it's really, where it's really needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to help out, like say, help the community out some, with all the projects they do and have read on.
We talked in our conversations, I'm sorry I had to step out, but in our conversations, you said that normally you have about twenty participants, a little bit more later in the year, right? Seventy-five percent plus job placement rate, one of the most successful programs in the country, correct? Also, you told me that to get to ten participants instead of eight, because the new, the program now, we're looking at eight participants, to go to ten and to go, stay at the four days a week, was gonna be twenty thousand dollars, is that correct? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve twenty thousand dollars for the youth build program to be taken from the community development line.
Our motion will force to take twenty thousand dollars from community development to, for the funding request for youth builds, any discussion? Hearing on all those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Karen?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate your support.
Well, hey, you guys have run a great program there, and we, we are very happy to be able to support it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the second most patient man in the room, come on forward, sir, Valleyhead Community Center.
Now, don't forget what I was gonna say. My name is Richard Gold, I'm president of Valleyhead Community Center, I've talked to Chris a little bit. We're wanting funds to move the playground equipment from the Valleyhead School to the community center. And at the time, the school closed down, about the same time the pipe liners moved in, and they assured us that they was gonna do it, but it never did materialize, so I understood. And I got ahold of contractor, Mike Carlson, I've got some pictures here of the playground, if you wanna see them.
He has up there, Bob, sign me, take a look at it.
Hey, Richard, did you get? Did you get other bids besides the one bid that you had?
I got that.
Couldn't, no one else would respond?
Well, you know, nobody looked at it.
We had the same issue.
And that's the sad part about you, you know.
Alright, so is, is the owner requiring you to move this equipment?
No, see, what happened, whenever the school closed down, the board of education, the board of education said it was their equipment. And we talked them out of it.
Yeah, actually, we, we paid them out of it, we gave them five thousand dollars, I believe it was, for middling upgrades, so we appreciate you talking to them.
And so I went down to the board meeting and they sold me the playground equipment for a dollar.
Oh, okay.
So.
Alright, so they say you need to move it?
Pardon?
Oh, they, they don't have any.
They, they don't have nothing to do with it now.
So, so what's, what's the desire to move it?
Pardon?
What's the desire to move it, Richard?
To get it out of the schoolyard, back to, see, this, the school has been sold. It has been sold to two individuals.
It has, but, yeah, I was aware that it had been sold.
Yes.
They are, are they requiring you to move it?
One half is and the other half ain't.
Alright, alright.
One half is, they're concerned about the liability aspect.
Okay.
And the other half said it didn't make any difference to him, so.
Alright, very good, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
But mostly, this equipment was bought by the teachers, the PTA, they had fundraisers.
Bought by the teachers and the grants, we got the.
And I believe Mike, I talked to Mike and he said that. And I, I believe Mike, I talked to Mike and he said that, uh, Snow Sheen's gonna help him with some equipment, maybe letting bars and equipment or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, uh, ninety percent of this stuff is gonna have to be disassembled.
Yeah.
And then dug out of the ground and the concrete knocked off of it and take them back down to Community Center and reassemble and put back in concrete again.
Does this room, does this include the, are they gonna put down something for, to soften the area?
Well, what, 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 what is in there now is chips.
Okay.
Wood chips.
Wood chips, okay.
Yes, but, but, uh, the guy said we could just leave them there.
Okay.
And, uh, but we don't have no budget for getting the wood chips or anything, you know, no.
Okay, alright, fair enough.
'Cause they are expensive, 'cause they're, they're disease-free and all that other stuff, you know.
Now, entertain a motion.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, I move that we approve the, uh, funding request from Valleyhead Community Center in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, which will be taken out of hotel motel tax.
Our motion on the floor is to approve the, uh, moving of the, uh, playground equipment from Valleyhead School to the Valleyhead Community Center. The amount of that would be seventy-five hundred dollars, and it'll be taken from hotel motel tax. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries, alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Richard, very much, nice to meet you, I don't think we've ever met before.
No, no.
Richard, very nice to meet you.
I'm like, you probably know my brother Stanley.
Oh, yeah, yes, I do.
You're right, I know them.
Well, thank you for your time, thank you for your patience.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, next item on the agenda is consider funding request for basketball court in Colton. Alright, do you want to speak to this day? Oh, okay. Alright, alright.
Alright, so, yeah, um, we were approached by Jim Rossi, the mayor of Colton. They're looking to, uh, their basketball court that they have there is a disrepair, it's used by many of the youth and adults, not only in Colton, but the whole area there. Um, they're looking for, um, help with repaving of it. Um, they got two bids, one was eighty-five hundred, one was sixty-three. So, I make a motion that we approve the funding request for basketball court in Colton, um, with no, with, not to exceed sixty-three hundred dollars.
That could also be taken from the hotel motel. Um, one thing I'll, I'll mention, uh, during Colton takes, although I was sick as a dog, Rob, I don't know, I'm surprised he didn't rescue me, take me to the hospital. But, uh, I actually stopped by and looked at that court. Somebody's getting hurt, guys. Somebody's gonna get hurt playing on that court, and they play on it every single day that the weather's nice. And so, uh, uh, you know, I, this is, this is something that's needed. Um, I will tell you, Colton's self, seldom ever ask us for money except for Colton days. He, they don't bring projects to us. Listen, they're doing a one-point-five million-dollar water plant expansion and ask us for one dime. They were able to get through the governor's office, which we, we were very appreciative of. So, um, so, uh, any other discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Alright, consider donation for corner repair of Maple Street and, uh, Woodland Drive. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Oh, you guys are the third most passionate people.
But they are the most.
I don't have anything new. Hi, I'm Brad Martin, I spoke here three weeks ago, and, um, I don't have anything new to give to you. I did indicate there was a second estimate and that, that had been, uh, with another project, and he gave us the split one, but unfortunately, it was higher. So, what we requested three weeks ago was fifty-fifty on the low estimate, and so, that's where it stands, so, nothing new there.
Well, Brad, you know, we use some coal severance money back, I'm sorry, we use some coal with severance money back, uh, uh, fuck, two years ago, is that?
It was last year.
Last year.
Was?
Last year.
Alright, alright, hey, listen, I'm blaming everything on the stroke. Uh, but anyway, we have, we've made it a priority to try to help as much as we can with our coal severance to do, uh, road repairs. Particularly, yeah, particularly when it's as much traffic as you guys have on the course, alright? So, uh, this time we'll entertain a motion.
So, the low end of this bid?
Yes, fifty-fifty on this, is that correct?
It was something like twenty-six fifty.
Yeah, I think something like that, twenty-six fifty, I think.
Okay.
That's what they were asking for, was twenty-six fifty.
Alright, very good.
So, I make a motion that we approve the twenty-six fifty to be taken from coal severance, um, in support of the, uh, Maple Street and Woodland Drive project. The repair of the street.
Guys, I'm so glad to get this done.
Michael, it's actually Maple and Finley.
Okay.
Yeah, Woodland was the other, are, are the street we're mostly living on, but we're, that's a separate project, which is not involved in this, so. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's the corner of Finley, Maple.
Uh, just to let you know, we're all from Woodland Drive.
Okay.
But we need Maple to get to our street.
Absolutely, and that place, it's been a mess for years, we know it's been a mess for years, it's outside the city limits, but just outside the city limits, right? We're glad, we're glad to help you with this.
And actually, you approached me a year ago, actually, about that very same thing. Unfortunately, though, that was in good phase and it worked for about a month, but it did not last.
That's the truth, right, that's the truth. Well, let's, uh, let's get it permanent this time, how's that sound?
Thank you, very appreciate it.
Alright, motion on the floor is to approve twenty-six hundred fifty dollars, uh, for the, uh, improvement of the, uh, let's see, Maple Street, Finley Drive, uh, project, the amount of twenty-six hundred fifty dollars. Any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Alright, gentlemen, thank you. We're glad to, we really are. You can go home now.
Thank you.
Alright. Andy, you can. Just kidding.
Was that severance relocation?
I'm sorry, that was severance.
Cold severance.
Yeah, cold severance, uh, you, do we need to amend the motion?
No, I said severance.
Alright, there you go. Alright, uh, next is consider signing resolution for the WCFA nineteen grant, cycle grant. Oh, this is a little, this is one of mine.
Oh.
Uh, this is a credit out facility grant, this would be the fourth year in a row that we would receive it if we approved, or fifth year.
Yeah, I think it'll be the fifth, but it's a hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yes, sir. Guys, the front stairs of our courthouse is falling apart. We just did us an emergency repair the other day. This grant will allow us to replace it with light, kind, and quality material. They'll cut it, uh, out of two sections, it's like they have now, and so, but it's gonna cost, uh, some money. So, it's probably a hundred and twenty-plus thousand dollar project, but after we're done, we'll have those steps back for another hundred years. Alright, so it's time we'll entertain a motion.
And just the front steps.
Uh, that's right, just the front steps. The, yeah, the back steps are, they're okay, with, since we've put the guardrails in, they, they work pretty good, right?
The back ones are good, the side ones are bad.
Okay.
That's the next step, and then, then we're also doing the sidewalks around the whole project.
Yeah, that's, that's, we are, uh.
We just, that's for the Monday special call meeting.
Alright, entertain a motion this time.
Okay, I move, uh, that we approve the signing or approval of the ABCA zoning license.
Nope.
Wrong one.
The one right of over.
I see.
Did you have a stroke too, brother?
Hell, I can. I have many, don't even know. Consider signing resolution for, uh, West Virginia, the WVCFA nineteen cycle grant, and this grant is in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
And our match would be twenty percent.
Okay, our match would be twenty cents, would be twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Our motion on the floor is to approve the signing of the resolution for the WVCFA nineteen grant cycle. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Now, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the, uh, ABCA zoning license for Dollar General.
How store is this?
This is the Harmon store.
Harmon?
Yeah, Harmon, Harmon built the, uh, the store there in, uh, recently in Randolph County.
He's there always, homes were, I believe, were.
Yes, sir, it sure is, and, uh, they sell alcohol in their stores, didn't know that, uh, but they do. And they request an ABC, uh, license. Uh, it says to whom may concern, Randolph County has no zoning rebel that, uh, regulations for property outside the city, uh, municipality. So, uh, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Okay. Can I move that we approve the ABCA zoning license for Dollar General?
Alright, motion on the floor is to approve the ABCA zoning license for Dollar Generals, any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Glad to have that store. Harmon needed it bad, guys, they lost Cooper's store with a flood. They had one, one store open back up, but it had just small, they had that store, they had that in Valleyhead.
Valleyhead, sure, yeah.
Great stuff, remember when the, the lady came to us before, Commissioner Keesley? I don't think you were here at the time, yeah.
I don't think so, I think.
Alright, last item on the agenda for consideration today is, uh, consideration ratification of signature on letter of support for Active People Healthy Nation Champions Institute. When we ratify a signature, the difference between approval and ratification is the signature has already been made. I was approached by, um, uh, Jerry Marco for participation in this Active People Healthy Nations Champions Institute. This doesn't require any money on the part of the county, of the county, or county commission. What this is, is just giving him a letter of support for him to attend this program. I think he's gonna get a scholarship, I don't know if the city's gonna pay anything or not. But he called me and asked for it, and, um, I went ahead and handed, uh, Brooke stamp it, uh, and we would ratify it at our next meeting. Uh, since there was no financial obligation, uh, the fellow commissioners didn't have a problem with that. So, uh, this time we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we ratify the signature on the letter of support for the Active People Healthy Nation Champions Institute.
Alright, motion on the floor is to, uh, ratify the signature of letter of support for Active People Healthy Nations Champion Institute for Mr. Jerry Marco. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? I'll tell you what, you were talking about an active individual, the new mayor of Elkins is working his butt off, and he's holding people accountable. And that, I like. Alright, uh, final settlement, annual accounting.
Make a motion that we approve the seventeen final settlements as presented.
Alright, motion on the floor is to approve seventeen final settlements as submitted, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Budget revisions, we have none. Uh, division of properties, erroneous assessments. Must be taxed, huh?
Ninety-five.
Woo!
It'll be here a while.
Um, I'm, I'm getting sore.
Make a motion that we approve the ninety, ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Um, exoneration orders as presented.
Alright, motion on the floor is to approve the ninety-five erroneous assessments as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Distress properties, we have none at this time.